So that's twelve hundred and ninety-three miles, is that correct?
Yeah, approximately.
Really?
Sometimes we'll run out and then I'll write it up.
Yeah, it just seems like a lot of miles in the year. I mean, I don't know, maybe it is.
It's not a lot of miles. I mean, if you're running, if you're running, you'd be surprised how you could bank up pretty quickly.
Yeah?
Depends on the activity time of year.
Well, 'cause I'm looking at the actuals in eighteen.
Right.
It was two hundred and fourteen dollars.
Right.
And then, now we're up to seven fifty. I don't know.
Well, that's projected. We may not use all of that. It's obviously subject to what we have going on in activity. But certainly we want to be able to go out and look at that.
Well, sure. I was just trying to kick the tires on it a little bit. Seems like it's three times as much.
That's also builds conference mileage if he goes to Hartford for any meetings or up to COG. They sometimes have department head meetings up at COG.
Right. I'm just basing it. My comment's only based on the actual incurred in eighteen.
Yeah.
So I thought it would be sort of in the ballpark, and it seems not. So I just wanted a little clarification on that. That's all I have. Thanks.
John, you got any questions?
Yes. On bottom of page two, it says we monitor twenty-nine businesses and regulate twelve. What's, what's that?
Is that the Aquifer section?
Yeah, that's the Aquifer.
It's for the Aquifer. We're required to register new businesses that are located in the Aquifer depending on the actual onsite activity. There's a list from DEP and it's in our own regulations as well. So there's a combination of state statute and local act regulations that you have to use to decide whether certain activities are regulated in the Aquifer. Some activities are prohibited, as in a gas station, they can be allowed near Aquifer. We have to go out and investigate, go out and visit. We need to find out what they're doing onsite. We've found some that are using art furnaces in the basement that are using, and aren't real furnaces, they're rigged furnaces, which can be allowed when we've got them in DEP. And so those are the kind of things we look at. We're required to register certain businesses and others don't have to register, but we still have to look at them and decide whether they are. And others will fall under DEP's jurisdiction. And it depends on storage of volumes of liquids that are prohibited or not allowed. You're allowed to store five, six gallons of it. You go over that and it falls under DEP's jurisdiction. And there's certain ways you can store some of this activity, some of these liquids. They have to be covered. They have to be in a self-contained container. They may need two forms of containment. So we're really looking at protecting our groundwater and our wells. The reason when that program was developed, it was very, very tough type of regulation. And it was essentially gutted. It became a business registration mostly, but we still look at a lot of these things. And there's a report that has to be filed, a report that has to go to DEP. And then we constantly will send reports up to them or ask them questions and they've gone, it's been very helpful over the years. So it can take some time, but once the programs up and running, it takes a lot less time.
Thank you.
Zoning uses a lot of legal as well, and you'll find that in your general government. We're going to review that later on tonight. Long ago, we took all the legal out of all the departments. Gary has a lot of legal uses as well. Land use is a litigious situation. We have to go by the book. We use a lot of legal there. You'll, again, we'll review that budget later on tonight.
Any other questions for Zoni?
I have a quick one.
Go ahead.
So we have a lot of paper in front of us. I just want to come full circle on the increase from the adopted to the amended. And I just want to make a statement. I'm looking for you to say that that's correct. So based on the schedule of contingency that you gave us, right, which I had been asking this for a long time, so thank you for generating that. The nine hundred dollar difference in the zoning salary budget would be part of the unaffiliated wages of twenty-four thousand, that transfer.
That's correct.
Okay.
Nineteen hundred.
So I just wanted to come full circle so we understand how the numbers from the detailed budget end up in the accounting of the contingency fund.
It's nineteen hundred, right.
Nineteen?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Yep, ninety-five, nineteen. Yep, nineteen. Yep, it's part of the twenty-four. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on zoning? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Next, Ledge Lighthouse, Health District. One oh eight Ledge Light.
Hi there. My name's Steve Mansfield. I'm Director of Health at Ledge Light Health District. I've been at Ledge Light for twenty-one years. I'm an environmental sanitaryian, emergency preparedness coordinator, deputy director of health, and I'm going into my fifth year as director at Ledge Light Health District. We continue to provide comprehensive public health services to the town of Eastline. In December, the Ledge Light Health District Board of Directors agreed to approve my proposed per capita rate of seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. This rate is unchanged from last year's rate. The primary reason for this flat budget are the efficiencies that we gained through the addition of four additional municipalities and our continued success in obtaining external grants and contracts. The state contribution to local health districts has been reduced ten percent in the current budget that we're in. In next budget year, they're expecting a twenty percent decrease. Despite those cuts, we were able to maintain the same per capita rate in all of our municipalities. We have a strong fiscal history. I've worked with our Board of Directors over the years to keep our per capita contributions from our member municipalities as low as possible while still providing those comprehensive public health services that are required under state statute. Over the past four years, the increase in per capita contributions from our municipalities has averaged point seven five percent per year, and we were able to present a zero percent increase in both fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty. Our proposed per capita rate is still lower than the per capita rate that we charged our member municipalities ten years ago. So we're fiscally very solvent and in good shape. I just wanted to double check. Did everybody get the packet, the report I put together about all our services and so forth?
Yes, it's included in the book.
It's in our budget.
So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about what we do and how we do it or anything else to do with our organization.
Seems pretty straightforward to me, Steve. And thanks.
You're a rock star. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was interesting to see the town's population went down a hundred people.
Yes.
At the same time that the student population went up a hundred and seventeen.
Yeah, it's, that is an interesting point. We have to rely on the latest census data that we have per state statute. And actually, eight of our municipalities saw a reduction in their per capita rates due to loss in population.
Okay. Any questions? No questions?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have ten municipalities, and this was the best budget meeting yet. Thank you very much.
I would guess that you're going to be the best department because you're showing a decrease. I like decreases. All right, one thirty-four, Brookside Farm Museum, which is Lee, right? It's the Lee House, right?
It is formerly the Smith Harris House. That's why we changed the name.
The Harris, that's right.
There was too much confusion in this town. Nobody knew where they were going.
What's the Brookside Farm?
The Brookside Farm is actually the original name of the farm. As far back as we could trace it, we even found signs on the property relating to it that go back, we're figuring probably to the nineteen thirties on the signs we found. So, big changes at the house. Our director, Joanie, Joanie had left us. Joanie DiMartino, she ended up getting a full-time job with the State of Connecticut working at the Prudence Crandall House. We decided to go away from the directorship and went more to a curator. We found a young man, Josh Taylor, who is now working on collections, honor collections, on what we have up there, recording them on and getting them ready to be put on the past perfect information board that, so that all our materials that we have, all our collections can be shared with the other houses in the town and with the historical commission. We are going through rebranding right now. We've been very lucky that the Friends have been able to find grants. It's very hard for us as a commission to find grants because when they look at the town income, they can't see giving us ten thousand dollars. But the Friends are able to go after those smaller grants as a 501(c)(3) and they've been doing it well. And they've been finding smaller grants, paying for, for the strategic planning that we've gone through and now through the rebranding. We've had a couple of rebranding meetings. We have another one coming up in the next couple of days. And this is all being paid for through the Friends, no expense to the town, and it seems to be working out very well. They will be looking into other grants for us. Possibly, we need a new side porch in the near future. It's pretty much rotted through. Mostly because of the way it was, they just put a second floor over the first original floor and it's rotting from the bottom up. So we've got a couple of estimates on that, and they're going to be looking for grants for that for us. So we're working the best we can with what we've got. We, a couple of changes in the budget that the, were made is, one, that the PT Secretary tour guides line has been cut down to six hundred dollars. We have volunteers from the commission now that are going to do the tour guides duties. So that six hundred dollar figure will be paying for the secretaries' fees only, so. If you have any questions about the rest of the budget, be glad to answer it.
It's interesting. When I went through the book, I made a note that said, "No grants, no donations." And you said you do have grants and donations.
But we get them through the Friends, so we can't throw them on our budget.
I have a question. You done?
Yes, no, yes. Go ahead.
I noticed-
I'm also bipolar.
Finally admitted it.
Landscape. Says we have increased our landscape to seven point three acres for the maintenance. Where did that come from, seven point three acres?
Well, what happened was, we've never had an official designation of what the, the lines of demarcation were for the ground surrounding the, surrounding the house. There was a study done in two thousand and eight, and I believe it was last year. I go back two years now. Two years now. Two years ago, that, that Mark and I got together and drew up some, changed some property, not property lines at all, belongs to the town, but where we would be, say, controlling the areas. So that area, it didn't increase to seven, it increased up to seven point three.
So you found out.
Yeah, when we found out actually where the lines were.
Okay, another question. On the telephone line, two oh one.
Yes.
I notice it's a thousand dollars.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. A few years ago, it was taught that you were going to do away with the telephone because it wasn't used that much.
We thought of it.
Yep.
And then we said, "Where will they call?"
Can the town give them a line?
So we have the one line.
Yep. And that's year-round?
That's year-round.
Yep.
It's checked daily, or I would say daily, but probably more truthfully, four times a week. But we've noticed a marked increase in the cost, and I just noticed it tonight. I was, I talked to Anna beforehand, so I'm going to have a discussion with Chris. Our rate, for some reason, went from about forty-two dollars to eighty-nine dollars over the last year, and we don't know why. So we're going to find that out. If you look back on the two thousand and eighteen budget, we actually spent five hundred and three dollars on the phone.
Yeah.
We asked to have an increase of three hundred and fifty dollars above the original seven fifty amount because we were thinking of putting in the internet, which we found out is not feasible. In the meantime, our monthly bill went from forty-two dollars to eighty-six dollars or something like that. And we're trying to figure that out now, why it increased so much.
Being told, being told it's because of the fire alarm. There was a second line put into the building.
Oh, okay.
Because of the fire alarm.
All right.
Although I don't know why that couldn't go on the first line, but we'll have Chris look into it. He's our resident.
Because you would think the technology today, there must be some way to have a mailbox, a voicemail box.
Yeah.
Where we, where people could call and ask questions remotely. It wouldn't have to be on the property. It, you know, it could be anywhere. I wonder if we could poke at that a little bit.
Could be at the town hall.
That's what I wrote down was, when I did the thing, I said, "Extension at town hall." Can they have an extension, a mailbox here that says?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, well.
Don't know what the capacity of the town hall is.
It's an idea.
I think it's a good idea.
And it's not, it's better for me because I'm only living on Methodist Street, so I can come over. It's a lot easier for me.
You don't even have to come here to get it. You just dial it up. They'll give you probably an order or something. Okay. All right. I have a question.
Sure.
Is John done?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
So I don't intend for this to be a long answer here, but I just want to understand the difference between a commission we have for the Brooks Farm property versus Samuel Smith and Thomas Lee. Why aren't they all in one commission? Is this, you got a look on your face that says, "Oh, boy, are you waiting for an answer?"
We've got a long history on this.
Well, I know, and I don't, I don't want to cover, I don't want to spend too much time on it, to be honest, but-
There are three different types of entities, okay? The, the Brookside Farm Museum is owned and operated by the town through a commission. The Lee House is owned and operated by the Historical Society, which has no, nothing to do with the town. It's a private 501(c)(3). The Samuel Smith House is property that's owned by the town, but is leased, I believe, by the Friends of Samuel Smith for something a year. I don't know if it's a dollar a year or ten dollars, but, and I believe, so it's three different types of ownerships.
We're working, we've made some progress there. We're not going to get all three under, under an umbrella because there is one independent group, the Thomas Lee House. They're strictly independent. They want to remain that way.
Mm-hmm.
They have a huge endowment.
Okay, what about the other two? Is there a?
The other two, we're working closer and closer together. We've cleared up some things, and actually Barbara, your next budget will include, some of her, some of her responsibilities to include the same, the now Brookside Farm.
Okay, because when I was actually looking at the historic properties write-up, I saw twenty-five hundred for repairs for a bulging carrying beam south of house. And I thought, "What house is this?" I don't, I don't even know what property this historic commission-
If it was for my, if it was for the Brookside Farm Museum, you would have saw it on our budget.
Yeah, so I don't really know what this is for, and it just, I mean, I don't, it just feels a little disjointed. Maybe there's a way we could combine those two properties and realize some economies of scale, but anyway. All right, that's all I have. Thanks.
I had a question or two.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, who is, Josh Taylor, who is now your interim curator.
Yep.
Is he being paid part of the curator's salary at this point?
Yes, he is. That's what he's getting paid from, yes.
So he's getting paid. It's not a volunteer situation, okay? That wasn't entirely clear from the narrative. Okay, but that's fine. Under building maintenance, which is account two-two-two on the sheet you provided, there's a nine hundred and thirty dollar sum there. So could you, and you referenced repairs to the porch and the restroom, and you're getting some money from the Friends.
Right.
Some grant money. So could, so what is the nine hundred and thirty for? Where's that directed?
The nine hundred and thirty dollars this year is going to the chimney. We have a leak in the chimney.
Okay.
And there's some north side clappards that need to be taken care of.
Okay.
And that's where that money will be going.
And the rest of your repairs will be covered by grant money?
That's what we're working on, yes.
Which you're working on.
I mean, we won't, our, our feeling is, we won't do them unless we can get the grant money to do them.
Do you have another?
Unless it gets to the point that we have to.
Sure. Pardon me. Do you have another source, other than the Friends, for your grant money, other than this one source that you're looking to?
They use multiple sources, okay?
Okay.
They go to multiple sources to get the grant money. The history, different history organizations, seventeen seventy-six and all different ones that they-
So they're kind of like a clearinghouse for them?
Right, exactly.
Perfect, okay.
Because their income isn't what, and unfortunately, if they went with our income of sixteen, fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars, we probably wouldn't have problems getting grants. Unfortunately, they look at the town's income.
Okay.
And that prevents us from getting a lot of these small, prevents us applying for them.
More. Okay. I had a question as to why there is no revenue showing in this budget, and I know you have activities and events happening. And I had that same question last year as well. So what's going on? Is there fundraising and, you know, that-
The fundraising now is all being done by the Friends. We found out with the 501(c)(3). It's a lot easier for them to run the fundraisers, and as a commission, we either approve them or we don't approve them. Last year, we went through a comprehensive change in the application to use the barn or the property. And so now, the fundraiser, the commission approves the fundraiser, but the, the Friends run it.
But the barn, the barn is rented out. Do I understand that correctly? Is, a few times a year, Boris Lekman had some restrictions on that, et cetera, et cetera, but they were, it can be used for weddings or something like that?
Things like that, yes.
So, and that's not income generating?
Well, we generate it, but it's generating, but it goes to the Friends. So it comes right back to the house through the Friends.
Okay, do you have, do you have the final number is what you're looking for?
Yes, yes.
Of revenue that come from the Friends to your group? Because we don't show any revenue. How much did your group get in last year's fiscal year?
How much did they spend?
How much, how much money went from the Friends to the, to the board on the, for the house? Yeah.
I, I wouldn't have those figures.
We don't give privy to what they've collected, but what you, what they've given to you to spend, we should.
They pay for it directly. They don't send the money to us to be paid. They, they pay for it directly.
Like the Thomas Lee House, apparently.
Yeah, sort of.
I mean, if we, for example, this, this rebranding thing that we're going through is costing about five thousand dollars. They went and got the grant, and they are using the grant for the rebranding.
So we're seeing the very basic expenses to run this house. The curator part, the expense part, the maintenance part, much like the fire department. We don't see all the money that it takes to run that fire department because the ambulance pays for it directly. They do a lot of in-kind with, with our departments that we'll never see. Well, we might get a list tonight when, when you ask for it, but, because you asked for clarification at one point about the relationship. So much like that, we're never going to see a revenue line on the fire department of all the things that the ambulance does for us. They are out there fundraising, grant writing and all that to help boost and bolster the home, the house, the town's museum that doesn't come into our budget, in or out. But, but for the, thank God, thank God for them.
All of these expenses, though, in this budget, the check is being written from the town of Eastline, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Then you don't, the-
That's correct.
The museum commission doesn't have a separate account that they pay bills from. All of these bills get paid from the town.
Correct.
No, but the Friends do.
And the, and the Friends do other things and enhance the home.
The one thing they will not pay for is maintenance to the house.
Right.
They will, that's in their charter, that, that's one of the things that the town is responsible for, the maintenance of houses. They will get us grant money to build something new, but they, say, for example, we needed the house painted. And they, they could not give us the ten thousand dollars to have the house painted. But they could apply for a grant to get the house painted and pass it through to us.
So, I understand it.
So, yeah, I, I understand your response. I, I get that. But it would be good somewhere in the narrative to, to describe this relationship and to describe that, you know, in some detail. Because as a commission, I'm sure, as a historical commission, you're, you know, charged with operating this, you know, under certain rules and regulations. So it would be good just to, you know, what we can see, we should be able to see, just so we have a view of this. You know, the fifteen thousand in relation to whatever else is happening, you know?
Can I suggest that if, if that was information that you wanted to see, though, it's a 501(c), so all of that information is public.
Yes, that's correct.
So you can just go and look at their filing with the state.
Right. And that, by the way, they are still under the Friends of Smith Harris because it's changing the name of a 501(c)(3). I understand it's not-
I mean, I, I'm not-
But that's all available to the-
Yeah, I, I understand it's public information, but I think for, for our purposes here, as a board having oversight, that it should be in the record and it should be somewhere in your budget. It doesn't have to be elaborate, but just a general sent, couple of sentences regarding that. I mean, yeah, we know it's a separate operation, but it gives us perspective on what we're paying for. It's a small budget. I will grant you that. Nevertheless, you know, it's, it's our obligation to, to figure out. And I, I think, in my mind, it was, you know, I know you're, you're charging there, so where's that going and coming from? So obviously, you have an operating source or operating group here doing a lot of your work for you. And so that's, it's kind of a, it's becoming a wash. I don't know the numbers, but, but, but it would be good to see.
And there's a lot of volunteer help, too. You see on landscaping, we have three hundred and sixty dollars. There's no way you could do that landscaping for three hundred and sixty dollars.
That's, that's great. That's great.
April thirteenth, we have a crew between the Lions and the school groups and everybody that comes out on, and for four hours, we do nothing but pick up sticks.
So. So just a last point. I mean, I usually do not comment on the, the positive or negative aspects of various things, but I think it's wonderful that you're, you know, you're a steward of a historic building, and it's just important to not only, you know, have that history, but, you know, to, to preserve it and to, and for us to be educated by it. So I'm, I'm very much in support of these kinds of things, and I usually don't go down that path when I do analysis. I think colleagues understand that, but in this case, I'll tell you that, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so when you go to the Samuel Smith House, when you're looking for funding, who is going to support you?
Any other questions for Brookside Farm Museum?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are the Friends of the house at all interested in acquiring the property for a dollar?
I would say no.
It's, it's, it's alarming. I asked that, and I'm not joking. I mean, it's alarming to me that the state will disqualify you for grant money because they think that we're flush with cash.
Yeah. I, I don't think that the house could be supported without the support of the town. The day-to-day expenses of the house are more than I think that the Friends could gather up and handle. And for that reason, I mean, I don't want to speak for the, them, but I would, my guess would be no.
It's interesting. It's interesting. Transfer ownership, but then have a stipend in our account. I mean, in the first year, it might be all the fifteen thousand. We might not get anything from transferring it. But you might qualify for more grants, and there might be a different light shone on it, and over time, you're absolutely right. So will we have to support this home? Yeah, and we should forever. Maybe not at this level, maybe at a higher level someday, but, but, because we do a whole lot of in-kind as well. I think there's some property maintenance that the town does in capital in, over the years. Interesting concept.
Yeah, movie. I'm, I'm trying to find the department where we support the various charities in town.
One fifteen.
One fifteen. I think our budget, how much is it? Oh, services to the community.
Yeah, we put two hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars in there for Thomas Lee House. They get a stipend every year. That's just a longstanding tradition.
Are they in here? I don't see them.
Thomas Lee, it's the Historical Society.
Historical Society.
Oh, under the Historic. Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
Twenty-two fifty. Yeah, I mean, I would, I would be in favor of-
That is a good idea.
Yeah, just to make that switch. And then that way, you don't have to become, you know, you don't have to come before us every year.
I'll tell you what, I'll make a private conversation with them, ask if they would be interested, but I have a feeling that, budget-wise, it wouldn't work for them. I mean, it's a very small organization.
Yeah.
You have probably, I'm going to guess, seventy-five to a hundred members total, and you have probably fifteen maybe.
But if you heard what Mark just said.
After that, maybe that are active.
Mark just said, though, that we could look at that and make it a stipend, maybe, and then that would get you, you know, you'd qualify more for grants. So you'd still get the income. It would be just a different way to do it. Not that we're going to triage it completely here, but- Not that we're gonna triage it completely here, but that's a good idea.
Okay.
Thinking out of the box.
I do like that. But, but the problem with this house, with other houses that you can hear about, Sam Smith, is, you know.
What about us?
Aging, no offense, Gary.
What's that?
An aging volunteer corps.
Well, thank you. I was young when I started.
And a, and a, a shrinking one as well. We've just not seen the people come out to support these old homes, unfortunately, so, in your spare time, Ann. Saw some wood.
Okay, any other questions?
I have one comment. Smith Harris House wouldn't be what it is today without Gary. How long you been doing this, Gary?
Twenty years.
Twenty years?
Thanks, Gary.
He's put in a lot of time with no payment, and, remember the board, we thank you for all your time and effort.
Thank you.
There's a lot of people don't realize how much time, I do, but a lot of people don't.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks, Gary. Okay, any other questions?
Nope, we're good, thank you. Department one thirty-nine, Historic Properties.
Barbara Lou Johnson, as you remember, has taken over the Historic Properties Commission from dearly departed Lorraine Lang, who was around for a couple, a couple of years ago, and Betty Murphy was part of that crew, and she has since passed as well.
That's okay. I got you covered.
Good evening, members of the Board of Finance. I wanna thank Gary Lakowski for answering most of the questions that you will also have for me, so I can refer to him. You went from a small budget to an even smaller one, as you can see. The relationship between the town and, and the Samuel, well, for starters, this Historic Property Commission has representatives from the three historic homes and our Historic Cemetery Association on it, we all work together in collaboration. And we also serve as the commission of sorts for the Samuel Smith Farmstead, because when the town purchased that property, they did not establish a commission, as they did forty years ago, for this, then Smith Harris House. Instead, the town simply established a Friends and used the historic, the overall Historic Properties Commission, sort of as the, you know, vehicle for requesting funding. So, that being said, the same situation applies as does for the commission for the, I keep wanting to call it Smith Harris, for Brookside Farm. So, you'll see no revenue for the Samuel Smith Farmstead, because any revenue generated is generated by the Friends. Do you have any questions about, I wanna thank you for amending, I hope it's amended.
Selectmen did that.
For, I wanna thank the Board of Selectmen, then, for adding another five hundred dollars to the twenty-five hundred dollars to allow us to fully pay for the stabilizing of the Bode South Rafter Plate, as it's called technically, but basically a beam in the southeast room. The Friends group has been slowly generating funds, but in every year since its existence, it has had to use the funds it generates.